... meeting of Peters Township Council to order. Mr. Lauer, the role.
This is Merrill.
Present.
Mr. Steigel.
Here.
Mr. Arcurry.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Present.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Okay. Join us with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The approval of the minutes from the September 27th meeting. Salute.
Second.
Discussion, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special reports, there are non-audience comments. Anybody in the audience have a comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we move to unfinished business. There is none new business. Appointments associated with the refinancing of the 2013 bond issue.
So, first thing I wanted to start out with is to let you know good news. As part of the process for refinancing the 2013 bonds, we have gone to standard and course to have those bonds rated. The township has retained its AA+ rating, and to give you an idea of what that means is that the state of Pennsylvania, less than 9% of municipalities have a AA or greater bond rating. So that says a lot about the township. The reports in your docket that you can read in totality, and these are some of the points that they make with regard to how the township is able to obtain a AA+ rating. The bottom line of all that is, it says that the township is doing what's right in terms of the management of its finances. So, one of the things that the township has historically done is to go out and receive competitive proposals for the various aspects of issuing a bond. Because we do that, it's, the township itself has historically had one of the lowest costs for bond issuance of anybody in southwestern Pennsylvania. Another reason why that's true is that Bill Johnson and John continues to bill us for the bonds only in terms of the actual hourly cost. What is a common practice for municipal solicitors is to duplicate the invoice with the bond council. So there are really three areas in which we have solicited proposals. The first is paying agent, and this is actually the organization that we make payment to, and they disperse those payments to the bondholders. There were three firms that submitted proposals. Zion Bank's fees were the lowest. We use Zion Bank for both the 2016 and 2019 bond issues, and we've been very pleased with their performance. And so, it's my recommendation to council that we appoint Zion Bank to serve as the paying agent for the 2021 bond issue.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Tim Prins, on our behalf, solicited proposals for bond council. Each of these firms are firms that are more than capable of undertaking this work. We've actually worked with a couple of them in the past, Carkill and Coz and O'Connor. Three of the four firms responded. The firm with the lowest fee was Dinsmore Shoal at $9,000 with no out-of-pocket expenses. They were the bond council for the Peters Township sanitary authority, and Patty Maury for the, who's the financial controller for the authority, was very pleased with their performance. We actually worked with them as well because the townships was a guarantee for some of that. I've also spoke to Mark Romita, who's the finance director for Saint Clair, and they use Dinsmore Shoal, and he had a positive reference. The cost that they quoted was $9,000. The estimate that Janie had, that the financial advisor had for the service, was $30,000. I will tell you that I was contacted by Jeff Mills today. He indicated that he would match that number that was quoted by Dinsmore Shoal.
Well, that being the case, I mean, we view Mr. Mills, we're comfortable with him. I'll move that we award the contract to Mr. Mills.
Yeah, I'll second that. I think Jeff's done a great job. Peters Township president.
Yeah, Jeff does good work.
I'm reluctant to change.
Well, is there a reason why he didn't lower the bid in the first place?
I can't explain why people bid what they do. My only concern is if we go out and ask for bids, and then we ignore them, then it makes it difficult the next time we go out.
So, say it 9.5 and all in, same as the other one?
Yes.
Paul, your recommendation was?
My recommendation is to appoint Dinsmore Shoal because that was the lowest price. And again, this is council's solicitor, and so whatever you choose to do, I'm fine with. I know, we've worked with Jim Webster, we've worked with Jeff before, I've worked alongside of Sean, so any of these, all people are competent to do this work.
Can we make an alternate motion to appoint Dinsmore Shoal? Can we have simultaneous motion to add that one?
I think we, there's a motion on the floor. We have to act on the motion on the floor, and then if that doesn't pass...
You'd have to vote this up or down.
Yeah, to vote this one down, and then we'll go to a second motion. Okay, motion on the floor is for Coz and O'Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Five to two. Okay.
The third professional services, that is, that of the underwriter. There were four firms that were, proposals were solicited from. RBC had, in terms of the cost associated with issuing the bonds, had the lowest cost. The nature of this, the nature of this kind of service though is that this is the individual stance between us and the investors, and so you're really counting on someone trying to balance the needs of the township and the needs of the investor. Mr. McCag is the person who will be representing RBC. I have worked with Mr. McCag over the years on bond issues, and I am very confident that he will represent the interests of the township well. Mr. McCag is also a township president, so.
I'll move that we appoint RBC to serve as the underwriter for the 2021 bond issue. Second. Discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Lauer. Being as his bid is $300 more than the other, can you just explain what the DAC research is, and why that fee is worth paying?
Well, I don't know that his fee's more than $300 more. He has an additional fee of $300, and what this, as I understand...
$300 more than the other bid?
Yeah. As I understand it, that this is research into, and maybe Mr. Berquist might know this better than me, but this is research into the current market for these bonds. And so, it's looking at how to structure the bond across, you know, the length, the term of the bond, so.
Standard.
Well, it seems like it would be something that would be rolled into it. That's why I asked if it was something different. I'm not familiar with the term, as Mr. Berquist is, that we're educated on that. Thank you.
Okay, nothing else? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second. So, anything on that?
That's it. We'll move on to the next item.
Okay. I would like, when I started this business 40 years ago, the underwriting fee was, I mean, we used to get paid $20 to $30 a bond. That's why I don't do individual ones, and bring it $3.95.
Yes.
$3.
And that's good from the municipality standpoint.
Excellent. The next item is a resolution authorizing the distribution of municipal pension funds.
So each year, the township receives funds from the state of Pennsylvania to help offset the cost of offering pensions to township employees. In 2021, the township received $527,701. This is slightly down from what we received last year. What this resolution does is designate all of these funds to be assigned to the police pension fund, and then in addition to that, the township will contribute to another $198,220 to meet our minimum municipal obligation for the police pension fund, so.
Paul, can you tell me, how do they get to those numbers? Why does it fluctuate? Like, last year we got $24,000 more. I mean, where do those numbers come from?
Well, part of it is based upon the pool of funds that are generated. In this case, this is from casualty insurance. There's a fee that's paid into the state of Pennsylvania, so that pool of money is one thing, and I think that's what's happened here. Because all the other criteria, which have to do with the size of the community, the amount of obligation for each individual employee based upon their class, none of that's really changed. I just think the pool of money that was available was smaller.
So, there's no discretion in that? Like, somebody at Harrisburg goes, "Make this..."
No, in fact...
"We're gonna give them a lot less, we're gonna give these people more."
Yeah, no, actually, and we haven't done this for years because there's not a need. There was a point in time when it was important for us to be able to calculate how they came up with this number. We would run those calculations, and we would hit within a buck of where they were. So I have faith that this number is actually correct.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 100121, authorizing the distribution of municipal pension funds for the police pension, the amount of $527,701.
Second.
Other discussion, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? How many days do we have to deposit that?
It will be, we actually have 30 days from the receipt of it, and it will be deposited very soon, so.
Does it go into our general account?
Well, no, this will actually go into, it's in our general account right now. It will go to principal, in the insurance company that handles the pension fund.
So, we get interest on it while it's sitting in our account?
Yeah, but you get, the interest anybody's getting on anything anymore is so low that it's, yeah.
Okay, statement of the minimum municipal obligation for employee pensions.
So, in the fall of each year, the township is responsible for calculating the township's minimum financial obligations for its pensions for the next year. And the method and manner which that's done is prescribed by state law. So in the docket, you have a statement of the minimum municipal obligation, and council's responsibility is simply by motion to acknowledge receipt of that statement.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge receipt of the 2022 statement of the minimum municipal pension obligation.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a quick question, Mr. Lauer. So this is $40,000 less than the one for the current year, 2021. So that, does the fluctuation involve the different staff turnover and things of that nature?
Yeah, you have individuals, you know, this last 12 months, we have just had a number of people who have been off either from illnesses, injuries, and on-duty injuries, and that impacted that. So, like, for instance, in retirements, you know, we have gone an entire year with a vacancy inside the police department, so that individual's not included.
Thank you for explaining.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item is a resolution authorizing appropriate township officials to file a grant application to the Washington County Local Share Grant Program.
So, what we would like to be able to do is to apply for a $500,000 grant from the Washington County Local Share Program to cover the expenses associated with acquiring the shelters and slides and equipment for the aquatic center. So that's, to be able to do that, it requires a resolution from council authorizing us to make that supplemental.
Mr. Lauer, does it have to be worded specifically for items around the aquatic center? Because we do have a park full of other things we're going to be interested in doing.
Well, it has to be a specific project. So, you could, it could be anything, but it has to be a project.
So, rather than as...
It could be a dog park, you know, if they...
Right. Could it be the maintenance building, or some of the other things that we were...
No, because those things are all under contract already to be done. It would have to be a project that not only, that not only hasn't started, but won't start until sometime next year. So that's why we're pulling out simply the acquisition of these items, because the acquisition of the items won't occur until later in the year.
One of the rules of LSA is that you can't retrospectively pay.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just thinking about the other pavilions and some of the other things that are being planned. We have over the hill the different trails and things. It was a question, because in the event that the aquatic center doesn't get voted in, then theoretically the grant...
That's right.
...disappears. Or if we would get it, or they wouldn't even consider it.
Now, Paul, would you have to go to that meeting to do the presentation? Are they still accepting presentations for those grants?
Oh, yeah, but, you know, that, those presentations are...
Are they gonna give you three minutes?
Yeah, three minutes, two, and then one minute and two minutes of questions, so.
Could you remind us also the timeline, when that grant is due, and then when the potential award of that would be?
The grant is due...
The 28th, I believe.
And normally...
Yes.
Yeah, and normally, we get notice of, on a word before the end of the year.
Can we limit it just to the showers? That way, if we don't go forward with the other thing...
Well, I don't think you can say shelters in general. I think you have to have, they ask for a project description that's fairly specific.
So, going for the great lawn with the shelters and the various pavilions and all of that?
If you wanted, I think there are additional shelters to be built there. We could also, we could look at that.
One of the things that's necessary is, it has to be a project that's attractive to the LSA board, and to sell it to them. And, you know, it's...
Maybe.
It's cool and, you know, exciting, and cool and stuff like that, that seems to be more attractive than a shelter. I'm just saying, it's, you know... I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution 10-02-21, authorizing appropriate township officials to grant an application to the Washington County Local Share Grant Program.
Second.
Discussion?
I won't be the one to say I don't want to get money, so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All righty. Resolution authorizing appropriate township officials to execute roundabout maintenance agreement for the intersection of Valleybrook and Bebat Road.
So, the purpose of this agreement is to define the roles of the PennDOT in the township with regard to specific aspects of the roundabout. So one of the things that we asked was that rather than it be simply a concrete slab, that there, that it would be left open, and that there would be grass planted in the center of it. The PennDOT doesn't maintain anything that looks like that, and so, one of the things that this agreement points out is that when that's done, township's gonna be responsible for the maintenance and the landscaping. We maintain landscaping in other areas under agreements with PennDOT, particularly in this corridor here. The other thing is, we've asked for decorative lighting to be placed on the roundabout, you know, with the idea of, one, I think the roundabout's going to need to be lit at night, at least some level of lighting, and it would also be a chance to extend the kind of things that we did here with banners out into that space. So, that's what that agreement says, that if those items are installed by PennDOT, the township's gonna assume the responsibility for maintaining them.
Now, there were some things that were deleted. The sidewalks aren't gonna be installed.
That's right.
But they also deleted signage, which was surprising to me.
Which, quite frankly, is surprising to me too, but that's okay if they want to maintain the signage and the marking.
Sure.
I find it hard to believe that when we get done with this, that when it comes time to paint that, those markings on the road, that we're not gonna do it, because we do it everywhere else.
And just another thing, this is pretty standard. Didn't we do these for Churchill, or for Center Church, I mean, and also Valleybrook and Route 19? Maintenance agreements for intersections that they improve?
The one that's, the best parallel is right here, East McMurray Road. All these sidewalks and everything behind them is under an agreement with PennDOT.
So it's a standard?
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution 100321, authorizing our township officials to execute a roundabout maintenance agreement for the intersection of Valleybrook and Bebat Roads.
Second.
Discussion, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I don't want anybody to mistake the favor of the roundabout.
If it's gonna be there, I don't want it to be a weed patch either, so.
A resolution authorizing appropriate township officials to execute agreement related to PennDOT Highway occupancy permit for the Lutz Farm Lots.
So, back in September 28th, 2020, the township entered into, well, the council authorized the township to execute an application for a highway occupancy permit for the Lutz Farm Plan of Lots. PennDOT now is taking the position that the public improvements that tie into their systems need to be bonded. These would have been bonded anyhow because we require all public improvements to be bonded at 110% of their value. So, this escrow agreement is something that is in addition to that, and so, it's my recommendation that Peters Township Council approve resolution 10421, authorizing the appropriate officials to execute an escrow agreement to guarantee the installation of the...
I move we approve resolution 10-04-21, authorizing the appropriate township officials to execute an escrow agreement related to a PennDOT Highway occupancy permit through the Lutz Farm Plan of Lots.
I'll second.
Discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A change order for the construction contract with A. Liveroni Inc. for the Rolling Hills Park Project.
So, before I turn this over to Mark, if you have any questions, this change order is an attempt to memorialize a number of small ads and credits that have occurred over the length of time of the construction of the first phase of Rolling Hills Park. The amount of the change order net is $49,621. To put that into perspective, this represents 6 tenths of 1% of the value of the contract. So, certainly, the contract, in terms of unexpected and changes as well, wasn't what I would expect for a contract of this size. But if you have questions, you know, there's, in the docket, there's a list of changes that have occurred. If you have questions about those, Mark can address those.
Paul, make a motion that we approve the proposed change order to the construction contract with A. Liveroni Inc. for the Rolling Hills Park Project in the amount of $49,621.13.
Second.
Discussion?
Just, I'm glad we don't have to have Mr. Semides duping it out with anybody. The reference to his fisticuffs.
At least we know you read the memo. I try to surprise people and stick something.
There you go.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ordinance amending Peters Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 447.
So, we went through this last meeting at a public hearing. Mr. Ball had asked if perhaps we could provide some diagrams to kind of explain what is occurring with regard to these changes. So the, the one change that is occurring is that the fourth floor of buildings will no longer be a conditional use. The other thing is that the setbacks are increased by five feet off of the road. When, one of the things that we believe that worked well on the water site was the fact that this upper floor was stepped back. So, what we're going, while you'll still be able to build a three-story building, that third story will be stepped back as part of this...
Can it extend in the back, on the second floor? Do you understand what I'm saying? Can it be an O-rack?
Oh, like you would drive under it?
Can we...
No, I think, in the back? It's in the back. I think the answer to that would be yes, that would not, these changes...
So you shifted it from the front, you could just shift it to the back?
Possibly, I think. We're talking about stepping it back from a road here, from Valleybrook East...
But it's also stepping it back from the floor down below it, too.
Okay.
Yeah, so facade steps back 50 feet from the property line and 20 feet from the second story facade, so. So it would be stepped back from, from what, you know, what's ever occurred on the second This is just another way that Seth was trying to illustrate these changes. So, you're dropping off the fourth floor, so you're probably lowering the height of these buildings by at least 14 feet by doing that. And again, he's attempting to illustrate this proposed setback. The other is the change in the four-area ratio from 1 to .85, which means the amount of coverage on the building of the lot will be less. The thing to keep in mind, and Ed and I have been talking about, is that when you take these changes in conjunction with each other, you will end up with sites that will be less intensely developed than the site over here. The site over here actually is at .85, but it has that underground garage that helps with that. And the other thing, it has a fourth floor. If you would eliminate even the fourth floor, they would not be able to get anywhere near .85.
They still allowed to have underground parking?
Underground parking is not prohibited, but I'll be honest with you, I don't know where you would see that in this corridor outside of there. Because it's not inexpensive to build. The other change has to do with the width of roadways and the setbacks of homes in the, what is the...
Seat conservation residential and mixed residential.
Yeah, so, you know, what we have currently right now is 20-foot wide road and 20-foot setbacks, to a maximum of 25-foot setbacks. What we're gonna go to is our standard 24-foot road with 25-foot setbacks and 30-foot setbacks, and, you know, the goal is to increase the amount of the opportunity to be off the street and not interfering, then with the sidewalks as well. And this is just another way to illustrate that same thing. So, this is the existing here with the nine-foot drivelines, and...
It's hard to envision anything in Peters Township that flat.
Yeah. Only after it's been graded heavily. And this is a width 10 feet, and the idea is to maintain the three-foot grass strip, in essence, move the five-foot sidewalks a little bit further back into the right-of-way. So it still has that, that same kind of look where you have a cartway, a grass strip, and a walkover, so. But that pretty much encapsulates what's the changes in the ordinance. I think it's a step in the right direction.
Well, I think the other addition of it, additional off-street parking in those plans is very, gonna be helpful.
Yes, I would agree. And, but what Ed and I told you when the zoning ordinance was first adopted, I think is still true. This won't be the last changes to the zoning ordinance, as we have more experience with it, so.
And what's the side setbacks again? Are they still 20, 25?
Well...
I know we're not touching them, but what...
In the conservation residential...
No, no, he's talking about...
I'm talking about the water's group.
In the town center, the... In the town center, the side setback is zero.
I don't like that.
Well, that's how you create a town center. You let buildings come together and create a continuous row. That has not changed. That has not changed. No, it's not-- Sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
I'm just against this change. We're, we're missing the opportunity to create this, was originally, the intent is create a downtown town center-type feeling, something like Main Street and South Point, and we're just creating another suburban-looking office buildings inside. It's just ridiculous.
But I don't think that's what this does, because this does not take away those sideyards. I think the only thing that it does is, is reduce the height of the buildings that you may have in this area. I think that's the only--
I mean, would you agree with that? The height--
Increasing the setbacks, it takes no sense. But, in my opinion, as an owner of two buildings within the McMurray Town District, I'm very disappointed.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 869, amending the Peterstownship Code of Ordinances, Chapter 440, zoning.
Second.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay. You intend to include these sketches in the ordinance?
There'll be sketches in the ordinance, but it won't necessarily be these sketches.
No.
Yeah, but there, the, yeah, it's the nature of that, that zoning ordinance is that things are defined by drawings.
I understand. Okay. All right, payroll bills?
Gentlemen, payroll for October 1st was just under $400,000 with paid deferred comp and tax. Cons payable is $1.5 million. Several payments are the pension funds that we just authorized, and they have a credit card statement for just under $20,000, along with payments for previously approved capital. I move that we approve the bills as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence? There is none? Anybody want to talk about the minutes of any of the boards?
I would like to make a comment about planning. Mr. Mills made a statement in the planning commission meetings regarding the town center, specifically that he hoped for a joint approach with the school district and township to develop the area and add value to the community. I would echo that hope. I think all of us sitting here are hoping that that happens. Do we have any further information from the school district about what they plan to do with the middle school?
Nope. I've asked this question to different people, and I don't think the school district has moved along far enough to figure that out, so.
Okay. One last observation for Peters Creek sanitary minutes. I've mentioned before, there's a lot going on down there. If council hasn't read the minutes, I would encourage people to. Perhaps we may need to, at some point, have a executive session discussion about some of the issues, in my opinion. Thank you.
I thought I saw something there, but something coming up, it's zoning.
Yes.
Am I wrong? I can't find it.
Send the--
There's a report in there from--
Oh, it's someplace else? I thought it was--
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought it was in the planning and stuff. I apologize. I knew I saw it, I just couldn't remember where.
You know, I don't see that mine. Do you want to talk about this?
There's a variance request in, for a resident that lives in the Old Trail neighborhood.
Yeah, I was trying to get an idea of what they were trying to do.
They're trying to build a garage for their RV and need a variance on site, are requesting a variance of five feet on the sideyard setback of 15. So instead of being 15 feet from the right sideyard property line, they want to be 10 feet, and they want to slightly be over our 15% lot coverage by, I want to say, one--
1.9.
1.9?
Yeah.
By, instead of 15, they want to go to 16.9%.
Do we, do we have a picture of, like, the property? So, I mean, I know, I thought that there was a drawing, but I, was there, I can't remember where it is.
Yeah, he submitted pictures plus signatures from neighbors who have no problem--
Like his next-door neighbor doesn't care?
The ones around here, I guess--
The immediate neighbors have signed his application and are not having, I think they want the RV to be in a garage.
Right. I'm thinking that's a better solution for--
I can't blame them.
You know, and this is, to me, not an issue that's kind of a township-wide issue. It's, I'll be curious what the zoning hearing board does with it, though, because they're not apt normally to give variances for things like this.
Well, we're smart to come in with positive comments from the neighbors.
Well, yeah, that goes a long way.
Anything on miscellaneous?
Yes. In your docket, there's a letter from John Delora on behalf of an individual, John Muzza. We keep learning things with regard to what the practices were at the tennis center, but apparently Mr. Muzza has a group that he puts together that, to play tennis under the bubble. And the arrangement, apparently, that was made with the tennis center manager was to allow him to discount these courts by 15%. And then, in addition to that, this individual was given, and his family were given the right to be able to play. I don't know whether that arrangement is something that is appropriate, but what I would tell you is I don't think now's the time to change it. I think we're having challenges enough with regard to the, to the tennis center, and I don't think we ought to do something that's going to jeopardize the goodwill that we have with this individual, who apparently is a big supporter of the center. I do think this is something that needs to be revisited when we eventually hire a manager for the site.
So I would agree with that. Keep it the same for the time being, then--
Yes.
We can evaluate.
Yeah.
Gary, miscellaneous?
I guess two comments. Go ahead, Jim. Lucker? Well, my one comment would be, I did gain a significant appreciation for the difficulty the fire department has in navigating McMurray Road during the rush hour. It certainly validates the concept of how much time can be eliminated with Station Number Three being built out on Bevout.
It will be tremendous.
The other question I have, in recognizing the traffic, what's happened with the school traffic in the morning and afternoon on McMurray? I noticed a lot more up on Center Church coming inbound toward the school, but I don't traverse McMurray.
You know, with regard to the new high school, it's actually worked out. It's the afternoon that what we hoped would occur on Rolling Hills Drive is exactly what's occurring. You know, to the extent that there is any backup, a school lets out, it's on, on Rolling Hills Drive, and then it disperses either from the top on Center Church or right onto East McMurray, but it doesn't cause a backup on East McMurray Road. So from that perspective, it's a whole lot better, and because you don't have all those students down at the other location, I think the other location, the traffic is dispersed much better than it was previously. So I don't think that there's a problem. I know Mr. Berkowitz had pointed out that there's a, seems to be a problem on Tom's Road. We're going to go, we're going to go out and take a look at that and see whether or not that's actually related to school traffic, so.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Well, if anyone wants to come about 6:00, 7:15 to 7:30 and see the heavy equipment parade come through my backyard. It's quite exciting. I'll buy a coffee, sit there on the deck--
There you go.
--and watch it all transpire.
Take you back to your youth with trucks and toys? Does it take you back to your youth when you were playing with trucks?
It does not.
See, Paul, do you know if the school district has ever considered for the home football games to maybe have a shuttle service from the new high school to the stadium? Because that's, that traffic down there, like, if I make a mistake and forget there's a home game, I mean, I'm sitting there forever. I mean, I would think if you could take, you know, 50 cars off of there by just having a bus run down and run back, it might alleviate some of that--
What, four games, five games a year?
It's still a pain.
They used to run a shuttle from the middle schools. So let me ask, I don't know what they're doing there, so I can ask Dr. Frank.
If I could offer something, too, I wanted to share with council that Mr. Lawer allowed me to review the comments and the surveys, read through all of those. It was an interesting exercise. I think it would be enlightening if anybody else was interested. Just a few things that came out in my mind. There were probably about 55 people who said, yes, they want a pool, and there was a big but after that, one of which was about the design, which we're addressing. But several of them were about not wanting it opened up to people outside of the community. The other thing that I thought was interesting was the number of yes responses, but about 170 or 75 said, no, they don't think fees should cover operating expenses. To me, that was a little concerning, because one of the points of the whole narrative is that the fees for this place will cover some of the operating expenses.
But the one thing that I will say, though, is that if you look at that, answer that question in its totality, the majority of people who wanted the pool, and the majority of people who opposed the pool, pretty much agreed that the pool should pay for itself.
Right. I'm not disputing that. I'm bringing a point--
But there, but there were people who, who, and actually, in both categories, who said that this is something that should be subsidized.
Well, the point I was simply making was, we're waiting to hear back about what the numbers are going to look like as far as the actual cost, as well as the operating expenses. So I'm wondering whether those who are hesitant about the fee comment are going to be put off, depending on what the fee is. So I'm not necessarily going to debate it, but I just wanted to bring that up. The other thing, there were several comments asking about the high school pool, which, again, that's another thing we still don't have an answer to.
We don't, because the high school pool is just now being finished. Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think they have an occupancy permit for it yet.
But they have to come up with an intent, one way or the other, and we're all waiting to hear. But anyway, it's just informative that if you're interested, it might be worth, if you want to kill about two hours of time.
At some point, we need to come up with a name for the Loop Road. I was driving through it the other day, it looks like they're ready to pave it, so at some, some point, we need to come up with a name for it.
I think Mr. Donin suggested Shipe after a veteran, or else we could call it Veteran Circle. Let's not do a contest.
Okay.
No.
Seeing no other business?
Next agenda?
Next agenda?
Our next is a workshop, right?
We--
Next, we hit the gavel for it.
I'd like to ask whether Chief Grimes could prepare in advance a report about the current archery program. I know that he wants to prepare that in order to apply for a permit, but I'd like, it would be helpful if he could present it before the night that he's, that that comes in for a public hearing. So can, will he be doing that, developing a report that could explain how he manages it, who the archers are, how many deer, a little bit more in-depth locations and things like that?
Yeah, I could ask him to do that, yes.
I would like that, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I got the gavel happy.
I know. You're just anxious to get out of here.
We do have a brief executive--
We do have a briefing--
I wouldn't want to let you down.
Anything else? May I bang you out on that?
Thank you.